Okay, it is seven o'clock, so we will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May 1st. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rusato?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and I just want to recognize former Alderman Vance, who's with us here tonight. I sat with her on the council for how many years, Nancy?
Ten.
Ten years. So, good to see you.
And don't forget Facilian.
Ann Alderman Facilian. How could I forget you?
Love that name.
Therapy.
It's a long night.
Item number two, which is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? I do want to move item number 12 up to, we'll make it item number five, and then we'll just move everything on down in line from there. Okay? All right, we'll go on then to item number four, which is the consent agenda. And we have item A, which is the January, February, and March City Council financials. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Everybody have an opportunity to review it? Okay. Can I get a motion to recommend that city council?
Come on.
Second.
Motion by Chancet, second by Salvati. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right, item number now, due to the change in the agenda, item number five is going to be the discussion on whether to adopt the Tobacco 21 ordinance prohibiting the sale of tobacco and related to persons younger than 21 years old. Alderman Wolf, you want to present that?
All right.
It's government services.
I'm sorry, government services. Alderman Atech.
Okay, so I'm bringing this back to the council after 15 months. We had a discussion back then, and it didn't go through. Since then, momentum has moved along, as you know, and Aurora has adopted the measure, and other towns in the area have adopted it. The Senate has also passed it, and it's moved on to the House. And so it seems like a good time to discuss this. I recognize that some of you feel that you've had too much information from me on this, but I wanted to make sure, based on the discussion we had last time and some of the other discussions we've had, that everyone is fully informed. So I hope that you read what you needed to read and disregarded the rest. Right now, we have people here from the King County Health Department, Michael Isaacson, and Carolyn from the Heart Association, and Nancy Vance from the Wellness Center, and Ashley from the American Cancer Society, and I'd like to invite them up to speak. They have some information to share with us about this program.
Very good. If you could, come on up and use the mic and give us your name, please, for the record.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Carolyn Surf. I live in Highland Park, Illinois, so I won't rattle off my address, but I am the Government Relations Director for the State of Illinois for the American Heart Association. And I just want to start off by thanking you for considering Tobacco 21. I want to commend you for giving a lot of weight and importance to the health of the next generation of residents in Batavia. It means a lot to the American Heart Association and all of our coalition partners. And I want to remind you that you're not alone. At this point, 23 other cities, or I should say, 22 cities and Lake County have passed Tobacco 21 ordinances to date. And as mentioned, there's also a statewide initiative, which we can discuss. So you're not alone. We're standing with you with our rather diverse and widespread coalition that ranges from health systems to big national nonprofits like mine, down to moms who really care about their kids, and teenagers, and teachers who are really asking for a solution to the vaping trend right now in high schools, to the police officers who see youth smoking as an issue and see this as actually a really streamlined enforcement mechanism. It's really quite a broad coalition. It even includes businesses. You might not realize that, but the Illinois Chamber has been silent on this right now, but the Indiana Chamber's president has been extremely vocal on what this does in terms of employment, making your city attractive to major employers and things like that. And I really urge you to just Google, like, Indiana Chamber Tobacco 21, because his talking points on this subject are very persuasive from a business standpoint. I want to tell you about the impact this has had, not just because I care, of course, the American Heart Association cares about saving lives, but I want to tell you about the impact, because I think the impact also shows just how marginal the impact is to business. It's sort of a win-win. Very little impact to business, very little impact to sales tax revenue, but you get a huge bang for your buck in terms of the health outcome and preventing it, the next generation of teens smoking. Numbers are just coming out of the cities that have passed Tobacco 21, but Evanston, which was the first city in Illinois to pass it in 2015, and the whole city of Chicago, which is now Tobacco 21, and passed that in 2016. Evanston has seen their teen smoking rate drop by 37.5 percent just since they enacted it, and it actually, since it went into effect in 2016. That's a third of their young people, whom would otherwise have smoked a cigarette, never smoking their first cigarette. And that, I think, is very impactful to hear, because you really start to realize that, A, it's obviously going to save thousands of lives and protect young people from a lifetime of nicotine addiction and chronic disease, but also, it really demonstrates that these kids are not just going elsewhere for their tobacco products. They are, in fact, refraining from the deadly habit and not picking up the cigarette in the first place. So your community is keeping vital tobacco dollars in your community, and it's being spent on things that don't cost you in the long run. So those are some salient points on this. I also want to point out, you know, things you probably already know, but I would love to discuss further if you want to get philosophical about it. There's the whole debate about 18 versus 21, and why you can do some things at 18, but not at age 21, or why you have to wait till you're 25 to rent a car or a hotel room. But this is really a matter of brain development. We have great science, and as the AHA, we've done the science. We know that 18 is a time when young people's brains are still very much highly susceptible, more susceptible to nicotine addiction. And also, this is not like some of the other activities that we allow people to engage in at 18. First of all, it harms other people. And also, I would liken it to alcohol, the other big one that's 21. When we raised the age for alcohol, deaths from binge drinking and drunk driving plummeted, alcoholism rates lowered. We saved tens of thousands of lives just in Illinois when we raised that age for alcohol. It's not really comparable to anything else, and if you have questions about sort of what we call the military argument, you know, if you can join the military and risk your life for your country at 18, why can't you buy a cigarette? Or, you mean, our veterans can go to war and return home, and yet they can't buy a pack of smokes? That's all very thoroughly addressed in some of the materials I think you may have received. I want to make sure that everybody got this fact sheet that's from a group called Mission Readiness. I don't know if you got this one, but I'll just pass it around, because it's really the last point I'm going to try to make. Mission Readiness is a group of retired four-star generals that helps us advocate on health policy issues, and especially Tobacco 21. They've come out in great vocal support. You'll see them in their uniforms around the Capitol Building in Springfield. And they point out that not only is this unlike other activities that you can engage in when you're 18, but from a readiness perspective, the military is definitely on board with Tobacco 21. All US military bases worldwide should be tobacco-free by 2020, and they are very much recognizing that the vast majority of potential recruits are unable to pass physical tests to get into the military, and it's really causing a readiness and national security issue. So that's their perspective, and I encourage you to read that information. But I've taken enough time, and I have a few coalition partners who would love to speak from their perspectives. So thank you so much for listening. Thank you for considering this, and please feel free to see us as a resource and reach out with any questions and for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Isaacson. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Health for the King County Health Department. Thank you for having us here this evening. We've got one of these posts in my office, too. Just two simple things that I want to highlight, based on what she just shared. One, teen smoking rates have been going down in this country for a long time, but because of electronic cigarettes, because of vaping, they're starting to go up. The teen smoking rate in King County is 8 percent. That's nice. That's a low rate. We want it to keep going lower. A lot of kids are vaping, though, and that, regardless of what you may see about it being a safer alternative and things like that, the research tends to be pretty strong that it's actually a way to get kids to start smoking, because you have the different flavors. Kids are doing it in school. So we see in a lot of school districts that school resource officers are actually ones who are bringing this forward as an issue. So that's something I think, besides just the smoking, that taking care of the electronic cigarettes is very important, too. The second issue, I just want to talk a little bit more about what's going on locally. So Aurora passed just over a month ago. We just passed the first hurdle in Elgin. You may have seen in the paper that Mayor Burns said that they'd be interested in entertaining this in Geneva. The trend is definitely going this way, so we really encourage this local support. King County, we introduced this a year ago, and there was lukewarm interest. Now, it was just reintroduced again last month, and the interest has really picked up. So we will be bringing this back to the county board to share it with them. As well, over the past year, we've been doing surveys of county residents, and we've done about 750 surveys, both online and at different events around the community, and we see 75% support for increasing the sales age to 21. So King County residents are strongly supporting that this is something that they would like to see. And then just want to echo that, please see us as a resource. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Nancy Vance, and I serve as the Executive Director of Living Well Cancer Resource Center. We are part of Northwestern Medicine, and it's nice to see many of you and the new faces as well. I think this feels like full circle to me, because when I was on the council, we were talking about the smoking ban in public places. And at that time, we were, you know, kind of debating whether we wanted to be a thought leader, or if we wanted to wait and see what the state did or other municipalities in the area. And I'm really proud that we were a thought leader, and we went ahead and passed it before the state mandated it. So I hope that you can support this effort as well. I don't have to tell you about smoking and what it does to people. At Living Well, we see about 650 people a week, anywhere from children to adults, and we are seeing an uptick in the number of younger people diagnosed with cancer. I'm not going to correlate that's because of smoking, but as you see what happens to kids when they smoke, and then, you know, just the effects it has on their health, I'm really hoping that you will support our efforts here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashley Locke. I'm a Hospital Systems Manager from the American Cancer Society, and I just want to thank you guys for considering this. Please don't wait on the state. I hope that you guys will consider passing this very soon in Batavia, and thank you guys.
Is Sarah there?
I am Sarah Greenhagen. For those of you that don't know me, I'm here representing the Well Batavia Initiative, and I thought I'd give a little bit of information related to the Well Batavia Initiative's stance on this, as well as my personal history behind this. Along with being a chair member of the Well Batavia Initiative, I'm a physical therapist, and I own a private practice, and I primarily treat the geriatric population. So I see a lot of what occurs when there's been a history of smoking. I see the complications that that leads to in terms of daily choices, health decisions that have to be made later in life, and I hear a lot of commentary about decisions that were made as a teenager or earlier in life that have now led people down this path into a place where they have to make these decisions. I treat people with congestive heart failure, type 2 diabetes, people that are consistently getting pneumonia, and these are concerns that I see these patients have moving forward through their life, not only when I see them, but moving forward. So I'm not going to give you a whole lot of statistics. I'm sure you've received a lot of information on that. But the Well Batavia stance, the Well Batavia Initiative stance, is that we would love for Batavia to be a leader in this initiative and really push this forward, because we feel that this would be instrumental in the health and happiness of our youth.
Thank you.
Are there any businesses?
Anyone else? Okay.
All right.
Lucy, back to you.
So let's open it up to the council. Any thoughts?
Hate to be first to start, but I do this at work all the time, too. So when I say what I have to say, it's not because I don't care about kids and them smoking. It's more about the government getting involved in places that I don't think we should be involved in. Smoking rates are going down. People are getting better educated. They understand the impact to them. So they've stopped. My father-in-law died from the effects of smoking. My mother had a heart attack, so it's personal to me, personal to my wife. Both she and I talked about this, and she's like, as much as that affects me, I wouldn't want to force this on everybody. Fortunately, both my parents quit smoking, so they're still alive today. I know that's not true for everybody. The vast majority of people that start smoking, start smoking because they're in a smoking household. 92% is what I read. So this is something that starts at the home, not in here. I am a parent, but I'm not going to be a parent through legislation. So that's it.
Dan?
I venture to guess that I might be the only person in the room that had a cigarette today. I don't see any smokers in here. I can say this much: I frequently wish I could talk to Dan when I was 17 years old. I remember the first cigarette I inhaled when I was at the Batavia Burger King, and I wish I could tell that guy, "You do not look as cool as you think you do, and this is going to be a super-expensive habit. You're going to have open-heart surgery when you're in your late 30s because of a genetic heart defect, and because of stress at work, you're going to go back to smoking, and your cardiologist is going to be super-mad at you, and you're going to be disappointed in yourself." I wish I could have said all that. I wish I would have known all that. That said, when I was 17, I couldn't legally buy cigarettes. I would go to the first sympathetic person that would sell me cigarettes. Sometimes that was in Wheaton. Sometimes that was in Lombard. Sometimes that was in Batavia. So when I look at an ordinance that would restrict selling cigarettes in our town, I'm worried that we would be creating a patchwork where there would be inconsistent application. I'll give this example. Last week, I forgot my wallet at home, and I only had two cigarettes left. Well, I smoked both of them before I got to work, and I needed to buy some. Well, on my phone, I have my debit card installed, and I went to the first gas station that I saw to try and buy cigarettes, and the kid at the counter says to me, "I need to see your ID." And I'm like, "I left my wallet at home. I'm clearly not a teenager." And he's like, "Sorry, my system won't let me sell you cigarettes because I can't scan your ID." I didn't quit smoking because of that kid. I went to the next gas station that sold me cigarettes. So when I look at this whole thing, and I appreciate all of what we've heard tonight and the resources that are available to us, and I've already told you that I'm a hypocrite, I feel like the state of Illinois needs to do what they're doing. They're very close to passing this ordinance, I believe, or the law, I believe. I think it will be the law of the land in Illinois. I think the right course of action is for the city of Batavia to say, "For once, Springfield, you're doing what you said you were going to do, and we support your efforts. Please pass this." I fear that if we pass it here in Batavia, we're asking Batavia kids to run to Geneva or North Aurora, or whatever the community it is that has not passed something like And again, it's a personal thing for me as well, too. Again, I really wish that, I wasn't coming off as much of a hypocrite as I am here, but I wouldn't have traveled to Indiana as a 17-year-old, and I wouldn't have traveled to Wisconsin as a 17-year-old. I probably wouldn't have smoked. Thank you.
Susan?
This is a, it's interesting, because Dave and I are the oldest people here. And Dave and I probably can go back in time and remember when the drinking age in Illinois was 18, and then went up eventually. And we, as the smart Elginites that we were, we drove to Lake Geneva, because you could drink in Lake Geneva, because it was just over the border. It didn't stop us. It didn't change the course of what we were going to do. We just did what we wanted to do anyway, because we were 18 and we thought we should be able to drink, or 19, or whatever. And then the law changed in both states, and then we stopped drinking at that time period, because I was in that time period. So my point is, is that the laws, when they're patchwork like that, just makes people move around and go do what they want to do. I would support this 100% if it were mandated from the state level, and I strongly urge the council to wait and not spend more time on this until we hear what the state is going to do. And to Dan's point, I think it's fully within, you know, what we should do as a council to send a letter to the governor and our senators and say, and our representatives, and say, "Please pass this. The city of Batavia supports this wholly." But for us to put an ordinance in place just, just as our town, to me, it really doesn't make any sense. And it may make us look like we're a leader in something, but it's just kind of, until everyone does it, it just doesn't make sense to me, and I just can't support it in a piecemeal way. And very much like Mark, you know, my family, I grew up in a household of smokers, and it made me know that I would never pick up a cigarette my entire life. I hate being around people who smoke, sorry, Dan, because it bothers me so much. So I think that's part of the education process. My son will never smoke. You know, again, it's an education that you learn at home, and so I don't want to, I don't want to regulate that at the city level.
Drew?
I heard a couple of times that, from people, that, you know, the state's close to doing this, and we're kind of hoping they do do it, and we should send them a letter to support it. And I would say that if we really want to send them a strong message, we should adopt the ordinance, and then send them a letter saying, "We support what you're doing. By the way, we passed our own ordinance." That's how strongly we feel about it. I think that sends a much stronger message down to Springfield than, "Hey, yeah, this is nice. Why don't you guys go ahead and do something?" I'd like to see us support it and send a letter.
Dave?
Interesting comments. I guess my thought on this is, is sometimes you just need to do the right thing. You know, I'm understanding that everybody's opinion of the right thing may be different, but, you know, Mark, to your point of government shouldn't get involved, we're involved every day. We make decisions every day that affect everybody's life. We're the ones that said, we're the state government said the age is 18. We're the ones that, when the state adopted a, whatever it was that they adopted that said you could have video gaming throughout the state, the local municipalities decided they were going to take it upon themselves as to whether or not they wanted to do it. So even though the state said it was okay to do statewide, local municipalities said, "Well, we want to think about that." And we were part of that. We said we want to think about that, and we didn't go along with the state for a couple of years. And then we decided to go along with the state. Going back to what Nancy said when we talked about prohibiting smoking within the restaurants, there was a lot of same, very much same debate going on, and a whole lot more debate, because we probably talked about it for a whole lot longer than what we talked about tonight. But it just really, in my mind, comes down to doing what's right. Inevitably, I think it's going to happen anyway. I think the state's going to adopt it. I don't see any reason to wait to see what they do. I think the right thing is to do what we think they're going to do, and we should just go ahead and do it. It's the right thing to do.
Anyone else? Marty?
Yeah, I understand what everybody's saying, and my thoughts on it are slightly different in that I don't think we're doing enough to make sure we ensure success in this. And by that, I don't think that when we're talking about doing these things, that we're aiming high enough that we're actually swinging for the fences. If we're actually talking about protecting people's smoking or not smoking, and protecting their health, and doing the right thing, why do we make it about age? Why are we just going with what everybody else is doing with age? I'm like what everybody else is saying when we're talking about patchworking, because what's actually causing more harm in our society is a "do it, do it. We know better than you. You need to do it." But a lot of how we're succeeding in getting the rates down is through education, is through good parenting. I used to smoke. I stopped smoking before we had kids, because I said, "I'm going to parent and not smoke around my children." My children cannot stand being around smoking. They're never going to think about smoking. And I thought smoking was gone until I started working downtown in Chicago. And I work right next to DePaul. Kids are smoking like crazy that I never thought. So I don't know about the statistics around, but right at the college level, where all the kids are, they're all smoking. And it's depressing, because I'm like, I can't, I thought people were done smoking. But to that point, it's going back on, it's a step back, and if we start voting on deciding what's good for a community and voting on that way, where does it stop? That we're telling the community what to do? Instead of working with the community and getting their buy-in on things and doing what the community wants to do, why not put, to a referendum, the sale, the banning of the sale of all tobacco products in the city limits of Batavia? Let the community decide that, because if the community does not want to be around smoking, what's more democratic than that? What's more impactful, that you're not segregating 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, whoever the ages are, and us as a community saying, "We don't like smoking for the health of our citizens in totality, not certain parts of it," and make that a mission statement?
I would just like to add that I've heard that those cigarette smoking is going down, vaping is going up. And if I think if you drive by the high school, when school's letting out, you might be able to see what's going on in our community. I don't know if you know that, I mean, I'm just surprised what I see in terms of vaping. So vaping is something that is happening and growing. I also think that, from what I understand, it's this age group, the 18- to 21-year-olds that need to be, are so important, because they're the ones that share tobacco with their peers, and they're the ones that become addicted more easily. So these are the ones, once you get beyond 21, your chances of starting and becoming addicted are less. And I also think, I think it'd be great if we banned tobacco, but I think we have to do it one step at a time. Anyway, Susan, you had a question, and then I think you might have some response over there I saw. Okay.
Yeah, my question was, Marty, do you think that that would be similar to, like, Wheaton and no alcohol, or is it that kind of thing, like a dry community, but it's cigarette?
There are, there are all kinds of examples where communities decide what they do and don't want to do, and those work for those communities. I think we're talking, if we're talking about community health as a community health issue, let's get the community involved in the conversation. And if the statistic's about 75% of the, then it would pass. And then you may still want to smoke, but we don't have to make it accessible if the majority don't want it here.
No, it's kind of like the cell tower conversation we had. We didn't allow cell towers last We didn't allow cell towers last week because we were afraid of the health of our community. So we said, no, we're not going to have it in our town. We didn't want cell towers on the Campana building because we were afraid of the health. And this is just kind of like one step at a time where we're protecting the health. You know, we're not banning cell towers throughout the community, just on residential units. And this would just be like alcohol is 21, this would just be 21 tobacco. Go ahead.
So to address that, and then Dave, you were talking about smoking in public places. I completely support that because I don't want to be around the smoke. And that's why, that's something that is protecting the greater public to say, well, you don't go into a restaurant, have to deal with the smoke if you're not a smoker. Grew up in secondhand smoke, I know what that's like. Speed limits are to protect everybody, not just the one person driving. Cell towers, protecting everybody, not just the person that lives right in that building or is getting the most impact from it. So yeah, there's a lot of things that we'll legislate to protect the greater good, but when you're saying, hey, we want to do this to tell people what they can and cannot do, that's where I draw the line. When you're saying, as an individual, I'm not going to allow you to make that choice. Besides the fact, it's not even illegal to smoke if you're 15. It's just illegal to sell it to somebody that's 15. So it really doesn't stop anything. It is illegal to drink if you're under 21. In New York State, when I was going to college, it wasn't illegal to drink if you were under 21. So all you had to do is get somebody to buy it and you could have a party at your, at your dorm and they couldn't stop you. So the law isn't really going to change anything from that standpoint. The decrease in cigarettes because of education, the increase in vaping, yeah, because it tastes good. Hey, I've got this bubble gum thing. I get it. But we're not going to stop innovation of corporations. They're going to innovate, they're going to find a way around this.
I think, Alan, and then?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I think it's all well and good that we want to be a leader and we want to, you know, be in front of this. And I'm kind of like Mark, I think that this needs to be more of a personal responsibility issue, you know? People have to take the responsibility of whether or not they're going to allow their kids to smoke when they're underage and if that's all the way to 21 now, so be it. I just feel like I don't want to see us spend an inordinate amount of time trying to come up with an ordinance that gets passed and then turn right around and have the state do it and then us have to rescind that and adopt the state one. You know, it's not a free thing. We do have to have legal review on it. We do have to have it written. It has to pass, you know? So there is time spent, both staff and our own time. You know, I personally think we should pass it at the council level and it should sit until the end of the state session. If the state doesn't pass it, then we pass it at the council level and we send it on to the state with a nice, strongly worded letter that they need to actually do something in Springfield. And that's where we should leave it.
Alan?
I mean, I guess hearing all this, I mean, I've been kind of of a mixed mind thinking about all this, but, but one thing I don't dispute is the health benefits, right? Smoking's bad. I don't think anyone out there is going to contest that. I don't, I don't think anybody out there is going to say, well, if you're smoking, you know, for, for 20 years versus 30 years, well, you're maybe in a little bit better shape. Like, no, it's still bad. I don't, I don't dispute that, no matter what age you started. When I look at this though, and I'm trying to think about the impact that something like this might have, you know, we, you already can't purchase it at the age of 18, but you're saying that in front of the high schools, they're already smoking. Most high schoolers are under the age of 18. If we raise it to 21, is this going to stop them? It might curb it. I, I'm not disputing the, the statistics that are being reported out of Lake County or, or any other place. I don't know that. You know, I'm certainly not going to try and argue that. So if we all agree that there's a health benefit, but there's already a law that, that is against this, an under 18-year-old smoking and it's still happening, I don't know that this does anything to actually get out there and get the cigarettes out of those hands and, and change that or, or stop that problem. This, this to me feels like it's, it's a message to make us feel better, but I don't know that it's actually going to stop the under 18-year-old or in this case, under 21-year-old that wants to smoke. And the question I, the question I keep coming back to is, at what point does the person get to make the decision for themselves and take responsibility for it? If it's 18, if it's 21, if it's 25, if it's some other age?
I think they'll have a good response to that.
I, I'm sure they will.
I think there's a lot of research that, you know, it's not just, I mean, there's the whole common good and in my opinion, I mean, there's a huge economic burden to smoking in our society. And if this is the group that's most likely going to not become addicted, by cutting this supply of unhealthy individuals off, the economic burden will decrease in our society. I mean, it's just huge. And I, I don't, I'm thinking that they can give us some statistics because they're the experts and I'm not. Go ahead.
So possession is not part of this, correct?
No, possession is not and it's not part of Tobacco 21 in general.
And I, and I have a problem with that, honestly. I mean, with alcohol, it's sale and possession.
Except in your homes.
Okay, fine. You know, my, my deal is if this is, if we, if it's at county level or state level, big time in favor. And again, I have relatives have died, I have, smoking is, it's not good, it's not. But if, but knowing Scott at 16 and knowing that I could go to Geneva or North Aurora and I could, you know, go grab a, you know, a, you know, a pack of cigarettes and then I could drive back to Batavia, I could sit out here and I can smoke away, I'm all in.
Yeah, we're probably going to get all the Aurora people here too.
And, and so there's, that's, that's something that I'm really concerned about. So unless the, the state is in, is all in on this, you're going to create a lot more problems. I mean, and that's, I just, that's my, my opinion. I, I think that just knowing how teenagers think, I've coached teens, I know how they think. They'll go, they'll go elsewhere and they'll bring it back.
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. Yeah, please.
Great, thank you for the thoughtful discussion. And obviously, the policy and the philosophy is your decision to make and that's what you're elected for. So as a public health professional, all I can share is the evidence that we have seen. And the evidence is, even though there are exceptions, you may go to a different town, maybe I would have gone to a different town, but the fact is, most kids aren't going to. So if you pass something like this, the evidence in all of these communities is that the smoking rate dramatically drops. Are some kids going to travel someplace else? Sure, but most kids are not going to. And a quick note on possession, this is, there's a lot of thoughts about possession and whether that can glamorize things for team behavior, how it's used in the community. This typically does not include possession because it's a way to keep kids from buying the cigarettes. Most kids aren't going to buy the cigarettes. We already have a relatively low smoking rate, but the smoking rate is starting to go up nationally for the first time in a long time and we think it's because of electronic cigarettes. So doing something like this is necessary. Like you said, we're, we're surprised to see the smoking outside DePaul. We need to take action to bend that curve again so that it doesn't start going the other direction. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Can you tell me how the numbers are tabulated? How do you know that that group of individuals, they're not smoking as much?
It's all surveys. So it's all, and that's how we get the numbers in the first place. So it's comparing how many kids said they smoked in this year to how many kids said that they smoked in this year. So it's all self-reported from those, from those students. And a lot of the, the research out of Massachusetts, where in communities that are very close together, the smoking rate where they first passed Tobacco 21 dipped dramatically, just like we're starting to see here in Illinois and it didn't in those other communities. So there was not the flight of kids. There may have been some and like I said, I'm, you know, maybe we're kindred, I don't know. So, but most kids aren't going to do that. So from a public health perspective, this, this is very much good for population health.
And, and the other question I had, and it probably wasn't you who addressed this, but it was about how Chicago passed Tobacco 21? And, and Marty has just cited that standing outside DePaul, which is in the very middle of Chicago and there's all these kids smoking. So how does the enforcement part of this work if they're all standing outside smoking and they're in that 18 to 21 age bracket? Is this working or not working?
Right. So I don't, I don't know for, for the kids that are there, how old they are. Like I go down to the DePaul Center quite a bit too and I know kids are, are all different ages. And certainly it's, some people can get around the law. It's, even when we talk about any law, some people break the law. So some people are going to be able to find cigarettes from people, but most of those kids aren't going to. With, with 95% of people smoking before they turn 21, if we push that age out, then most people are not going to smoke, far and away. So, but yeah, of course, you can find, I guarantee there's kids out there with illegal drugs in Batavia right now. I guarantee there's somebody stealing something and it's everywhere in America, right? But most people aren't. Most people obey the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah. I used to smoke and I regret that I ever did and I wish there was more things in place so I didn't back then. But having taught both middle school and high school and worked with a lot of youth over the years, the way I see it is, if it's at 18 now, 18's in the high school, that means they have friends that are 15. If it's 21, there's a, there's a gap there. That's a, a little bigger barrier as a way, because we know from the statistics we're hearing, we can help some people not have to have to go through starting smoking. And, you know, the way I see it is I'm going to be retired soon and I need those younger people as healthy as they can to keep social security afloat. But in terms of waiting for the state, I can assure you the tobacco lobby is trying to prevent what's happening in the state. I can assure you of that. They're not here yet. We have an opportunity to assist the state to get to where we all think would be a better, better public health for, for our people. In terms of government, you know, government interference or government regulation, I'm sorry, I lived in the third world. If you want no government regulation, you can go live in a place where there, there is no laws, you can do whatever you want, but public health is horrible. Roads are horrible, everything's horrible. So, you know, we, part of, of government is, or society is to protect us from each other. And if we, I have identified something that's harmful to our youth and we don't do anything about it, I think we're fundamentally failing in our, in our duty to protect us from each other.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I think we're underestimating our kids that are 18 to 21 because I agree with you. I think that if the law were 21, I think there are enough educated students in that 18 to 21-year-old age group that would quit. What I'm very concerned about, in addition to the cigarette smoking, is the vaping. And I wish we had some people from the school district here because I'll tell you, this is a problem in school. And if we didn't have 18-year-olds that could have it, I don't think we would have as big of a problem as we do today. That's what I think about it.
Any other comments?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to staff to draw an ordinance restricting the age of tobacco to the sale of tobacco products to those 21 years and older.
Second.
Let's take a voice vote, I mean a roll call. Etta?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chancet?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien absent. Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
No.
Seron absent. McFadden?
Aye.
And Rosato?
Aye.
Six to six?
Six to six, so it does go to the city council with a tie vote for recommendation. Or no, it doesn't go to city council. Six to six for a recommendation that makes the staff create an ordinance.
So we, now I will add that I talked to the mayor about this and he is in support, but he would like, and I don't know whether we need to do it now or later, but he would like Marijuana 21 to be part of this. I'm just throwing that out there, we can talk to the mayor about it and see what he thinks, whether he wants to add. I, I did get an ordinance from West Chicago, I sent one saying this was an example. Go ahead. Nancy, do you?
I spoke with him last, on Friday. And he just wanted the conversation, at least he put in our conversation, he wanted the conversation to be broader. He supported the art ordinance of Tobacco 21. And he said, what are we going to do later with marijuana? So I don't believe he wanted them combined.
Okay.
He just said, you know, this will bring up another discussion.
That's probably, okay, we, that's good.
And the state legislation that would lead to marijuana does have a currently separate protocol.
Okay. All right. Okay, then we got it. You, Dan?
I'm just curious if there'd be a different vote if we made a motion supporting the state's efforts and have the city wait for the state to make some decisions. I'm curious if that would change the vote and I would entertain a second on that.
Second.
I think we already voted.
What is your motion?
To send a letter to the state, governor, our state reps, to ask them, senators to support this initiative.
In addition to the ordinance?
Well, right now, Lucy, it's a tie vote. I don't believe, as a tie vote, I believe it's dead.
I'm looking to see if I can get a majority.
But it doesn't go to the council, I mean, it doesn't, right, okay.
No.
All right.
Trying to save you, so I'm trying to give you a majority.
Well, I don't, I, I personally don't think that's effective.
Better than failing in committee.
Would it not go to the city council for a final vote on whether or not to have an ordinance drawn up or would it just die in council?
It has to pass.
Yeah, I think, I think it has to pass.
We've sent stuff with negative recommendation to council.
Right.
And voted on it.
Right.
Well, it actually needs to go to committee first if we're going to have an ordinance drawn up, right?
We don't have a, we don't have an ordinance to vote on here tonight.
Right, so this is just directing council to draw up an ordinance?
Right.
I mean, staff, sorry. And we aren't in agreement that we should do that.
Right, a split vote on it, so there's no agreement to.
Right, so that's why I proposed a second motion to see if we could get a, a majority of people at least acknowledging that this is a good initiative and we would like to sit back and see if the state is willing to, willing to act. We can obviously bring this up at a later time if the state fails at the job we've sent them to do. So I guess I would call the question.
Okay, you got that one? Jenny?
I do. Do you want a roll call now?
Yeah.
And that was Chancet's.
Discussion of that one first.
Discussion.
Withdrawal.
Oh, he just wants a discussion?
No.
Just, yeah, yes, yeah.
Oh, he called a question.
Can I withdraw that, please?
Withdraw the what?
Calling of the question.
Okay.
Marty? Emmanuel?
The reason why I'm saying no to the first part, but why I'm making the motion to the second part is because I want to make sure that what we're doing actually has teeth to it that we can enforce and really get behind something that's actually larger, that actually does send a bigger message. And if it's banning tobacco products off of the school property, which is, that, I don't know why that's even allowed. If people, if you're saying people are smoking or vaping on, on school property where there are minors, I don't even know why the school's not addressing that, number one. But what I want us to do is send a message to have a greater buy-in overall on these larger issues. And what I want us to do is to make sure that we succeed in not just passing something that potentially could have some problems with it, with either stopping people or not stopping people. I think if we're really committed to really seeing the public health of people be changed, the community should come out and say so.
Of like?
And, but it can be done. It's a difference of opinion and the last time I checked, we all should be able to have our difference of opinion. We're trying to accomplish the same goal. We're just discussing it in a manner. Because what we have seen, where we are as a country is fractured, because people are saying, this is what you need to do, and telling each other what we need to do. We're not having discussions about what do we actually really want to accomplish, and what is our path to getting there? And we can disagree on small minutia about the strategy of it, but what is the end game goal that I would like us to succeed at? And if it means pulling more of the community in on these larger issues, instead of talking to 17-year-old Dan and 16-year-old Scott, because those kids aren't wanting to listen, because smoking is of itself a rebellious act that they don't want to be told what to do. And the more that you're telling people, don't do it, don't do it, they're gonna do it. So we want to be able to pull people in and make sure that it's their choice as to why they shouldn't be doing it. The more that you have people saying, I'm not going to smoke, which is going back to educating, like Tony said, teaching them, the rates have been declining because the education has been working.
With all due respect, Marty, I think you're making stuff up. I mean, it's not like you suggested we should put cell towers out to a referendum. We just heard people that are very knowledgeable about things providing us with good information, and we are acting like we never heard it. And, I mean, this is an opportunity to make an impact now, a small impact, to suggest that we're going to come up with a referendum and put it out to the city to say whether we want to ban tobacco products could take a very long time.
Lucy?
Before I was interrupted, excuse me, I was not finished, and I still had the floor. And if we're going to tell.
You're taking the floor, go ahead, take the floor.
No, I still had the floor, I was still talking. And if we're going to tell people what to do, I would suggest that we follow our own rules of decorum and letting each other speak and air it out and not make personal attacks on people as to making stuff up or bringing in different stuff about cell towers. Because if you want to talk about the cell towers, that is currently a law that was vetted by other people in our community, and we were talking about getting rid of it. It's not the same thing. It is not. And it's not about talking about different health issues or this or that. Cell towers were there for a reason. We were talking about overturning it. What was the reason other than financial? People that sat in these seats before us made wise, informed decisions on things. You constantly remind us about that. And because I choose to make sure that my vote, in my opinion, is recognizing those things, and we don't just overturn things willy-nilly, it doesn't mean that I'm being inconsistent on it. I am saying, I am learning and listening to what the community is saying, and it's not pulling stuff out or making it up that I'm saying I want us to listen to people and get more buy-in. That I am not, I have not once discredited anything you've said, or said it's hogwash, or that it's ridiculous, or any of those things. Never once. I support people not smoking. My father is dead because of it. I can't bring him back because of it. So it is very personal to me, and I did make the choice myself. These things go to personal responsibility, and the more that we share and talk to each other about having thoughtful discussions, we advance a nobler agenda.
Do you, did you hear the survey results that Michael presented to us about how the community feels about smoking? Marty?
Lucy, you know what I think we need to do?
What?
Because this could go on for another three hours. There's other hands up in the air. We've got another motion on the floor. I would recommend that, because I'm not sure how this really works. Laura just looked it up in the Roberts Rules of Orders, and the Roberts Rules of Order says when it's a tie vote, it dies.
Okay.
Period. Okay? But yet, in my opinion, I think that one alderman can ask another alderman to join them into asking staff to create a resolution. So you don't even need a majority vote in order to bring that on to the city council.
Okay.
Okay, so what I would really like to do, since there are eight other items or so on the agenda, I think, Dan, I would like to ask you to withdraw your motion, and I would like to ask Laura to talk with our city attorney about, you know, the Roberts Rules of Orders in this case, and also whether or not one alderman could ask the other alderman to draft a resolution, to ask staff to draft a resolution, and we could have this conversation again at the city council meeting.
And I would respectfully ask that we take the vote. The reason I say that is because if we have.
Two separate things.
If we've just sent a tie vote, and we still ask staff to put an ordinance together that we're probably going to get half of us voting yes for and half of us voting no for, I've said that time and time again, some of our weakest ordinances that we've passed are our seven to sevens where the mayor breaks a tie, I like a 10 to four, I like a 12 to two, maybe we could build some consensus here, and maybe 12 of us are going to say, yeah, let's tell the state to do their job. I remind you that after the mass shootings that we had, I didn't say, let's ban guns in Batavia. I said, can we please ask our leaders above us to do their jobs and fix this? That's all I'm asking for here, so I'm staying consistent, and that's why I would like my vote to go through.
Why don't we give it to Scott and then?
Just, I don't think there's anyone in this council that says, yay cigarettes.
Except Dan.
Except for Dan. Okay. You know, or hey, let's give access to cigarettes to our kids, let's, you know, let's, all right? I think Dan is being magnanimous and really trying to keep this conversation going. I'm, if the state's involved, if the county's involved, let's do this. Let's push it forward, let's, you know, do a resolution, that's fine. But there's a lot of moving parts here. I want the state to be in on this, because if you can, if you can have the state move, then it's a lot tougher for 16-year-old Scott to go find cigarettes. It just is. Okay? Because, to Marty's point, it is an act of rebellion. Absolutely. More so than anything.
Do you think our ordinance is going to be as powerful as the, I mean, our resolution is powerful as the 23 other ordinances that other cities around our state are passing, including Evanston and Chicago and Aurora and Naperville? I mean, I think it, it looks like we're afraid, frankly.
State legislation?
Yes.
Please use the mic, Phil, yes.
I don't know what everybody's heard about the state legislation, but it is not close to passing. So, yes, it passed out of the Senate, that was an uphill battle. It is by no means a sure thing in the House. I would give it 50/50 chances right now, and we're still working to literally get every single vote we can in order to get a majority in the House. After that, the governor has until, what, November to sign it. The chance to save lives this year is now with an ordinance, and the chance to convince your state legislators to vote yes and support the statewide solution, which we all agree is the real solution, is to do this as an ordinance at the city level and say, look, an entire large community in your district that you represent supports this. It also sends a message to cities like Elgin, which is going to be on their first reading of a draft ordinance in just two weeks from now. It also sends a message to Geneva, which apparently is considering it, I'm not sure what stage they're at, and St. Charles, which has vocally said, their mayor has vocally said, that he will consider this if surrounding towns did it. So, consider that you could be creating a cluster of healthy communities that don't have to vie for teenagers' tobacco dollars. If you were able to lead on this issue and act together with your neighboring towns, send the required, the really necessary message to the state that's more effective. You know what? Crystal Lake and a couple other, not Crystal Lake, where am I thinking of, did a resolution. Two cities have done resolutions now at this point. Some counties, DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference has done that in order to encourage cities in DuPage County. But that, it's not the same as an ordinance. It could take, what, another month or two to sort of study this or bring it back for another discussion, which I'm happy to engage in. It's really no skin off my back to come down here for another discussion of this issue, and I can talk ad nauseam at it, about it, which I won't do right now, but I really want to just let you know that the more effective thing to do to achieve what some of you are saying, what you would like the state to move, and I challenge you to actually do the thing that will cause that to happen this year, and not do things that cause the state to take a nonchalant, we'll, you know, wait till next year approach. So please consider doing the ordinance this, this year, this month, if possible. We're in the last four weeks of legislative session down in Springfield, so now is the time to take action on this. I also just want to point out that, I just want to reinforce the point about the teen smoking rates and how, yes, you're not going to get everybody to stop smoking, or you're not going to get all teens to refrain from smoking, but it's not just 18 to 20-year-olds that this law is affecting. The number one source of tobacco for 15 to 18-year-olds is their 18 to 20-year-old counterparts, their peers is where they get tobacco from. I know some people, you know, might pick it up from their parents or whatnot, but this is about preventing the whole next generation, and it's, you know, it's about whether you want to save some lives or let things go as the status quo. Smoking rates are not going down. They're going up for the first time in 20 years, and people do still smoke. This is still a problem. There's a problem to solve, and there's a solution for it. Yep.
It was you who mentioned the Tobacco 21 ordinance in Chicago, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the question that I have is, if there are still groups of potentially 18 to 21-year-olds standing around smoking, how much in the way of teeth do these ordinance have?
Oh, yeah, okay, so I thank you for bringing that up. It's not, first of all, it's not just smoking traditional tobacco cigarettes, and it's not just college students we're worried about right now, it's really the vaping, which studies now, we have really great data that shows that electronic cigarette use and vaping does predispose people to become traditional smokers at higher rates. And that is what we attribute the recent uptick in smoking rates to. But in terms of enforcement and effectiveness and it having teeth, it's actually, we think about the Chicago and Evanston ordinance, and for that matter, the 21 other cities in Illinois that have passed this, we don't, most cities haven't put penalties on possession and purchase, although some have, a couple have. Mundeline, I think, kept their age, or raised their age for possession, and I believe it was Buffalo Grove that still includes a penalty for possession, so you could do that, maybe make it less than what you would do for adult business retailers who are the source of the tobacco, but if you wanted to give it teeth, you could, there are options for tweaking your ordinance to your community's needs. But we do it, most communities have done it where it's just on possession, because that is what we've seen as being super effective without having a negative impact on kids that might not be able to talk to their parents about their $100, $75, $25 ticket that then spirals into an unpaid ticket type situation, and also dealing with the difficulties of enforcing the possession part. If you don't raise the age for possession, this is actually really easy to enforce. You can check one age for, when you do retailer stings. You can check one format of ID, because 18 and 21-year-olds have different driver's license formats, and it becomes actually more convenient.
I would respectfully disagree.
Okay.
About the conversation that I would have with my son about a $75 ticket. That's the perfect time to have a discussion about cigarette use.
I commend your parenting skills.
Well, I mean, honestly, I mean, that's, you know, if that happens, the discussion's being had.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a natural trigger right there.
And like I said, it's up to your community whether or not you choose to add penalties for the young people that, but I just do want to mention, though, that it is difficult to enforce for possession because of, because of the patchwork thing where people traveling from other communities might be driving through at age 19 doing smoking cigarettes. Any other questions?
Just recognizing that about 20 minutes ago, we had a tie vote, we're still talking about the topic, we have another motion on the floor that's been seconded, and we're still talking about this topic. Where are we going?
Did he, did you withdraw it?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so Dan does have a motion on the floor, and we'll take a vote on that. I do want to, for point of order, I want to point out that should someone want to raise the reconsideration of Lucy's motion, according to what Roberts Rules of Orders has got here, the prevailing, it needs to be someone on the prevailing side. The prevailing side in this case would be the no side, someone that voted no. So if someone that voted no wanted to bring the vote back up for reconsideration, and someone else on the no side said they would join them in that reconsideration, it could be voted on again tonight. Otherwise, it lays dead.
Okay.
So, Dan, you got a motion on the floor? And a second by Marty, was it? Okay, why don't you do a roll call on that?
But could you clarify the motion?
An affirmative would be to send a letter to the governor and our representatives, asking them to support Tobacco 21. With, I suppose, a PS that says, if you don't do it, we will. Kidding, not kidding.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien, absent. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
No.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
And Stark?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, that's where we're at for this subject.
Can I make a motion to ask staff to draw up an ordinance that we talked about before?
I think.
Didn't you say I could do that?
Because it was voted on someone on the no side, which would be the prevailing side, because it didn't pass.
Was that what you're saying, just for the ordinance, though?
I think we need to have Laura check with Kevin.
Okay.
Because it's already been voted on, and usually, that has to happen at the next scheduled meeting, whether it be a city council meeting or whether it be a Cow meeting. It's the next. No, it has to be done the next day, either that day or the next day of the vote.
I asked to recall the Arch vote. That is exactly how it goes.
Right.
You have two people from the no side change their mind, so we can't vote on the same thing.
When did we recall that? The same meeting?
We talked about it.
The same meeting or another meeting? We just, Laura just looked it up.
Okay. The next meeting.
Okay. I think it has to be the next meeting. So as far as your request to have another alderman ask to join you in having staff draw up a resolution, I don't know if we can really do that, I mean, or an ordinance. Usually, when we direct staff to do something, it's to look into something, not actually draw an ordinance up.
Okay.
Have we?
Sometimes we have been asked to draw up an ordinance for your consideration.
I'll be making one of those motions later tonight.
But then we'll vote on it.
And my argument was, if we're sending it six to six, I wouldn't waste the time drawing an ordinance that might fail. That's why I was trying to suggest an ordinance or a motion or a direction for us that would pass, and we did get a majority tonight.
So one of the good things is there are a lot of models out there to follow, so it probably shouldn't take much resources just to use that as a template for something for you to consider.
All right, Lucy, you're asking for someone else to join you?
Mm-hmm.
I'll join you.
Thank you.
Okay. Laura, you got your homework to do.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
All right. I did inadvertently skip item number three, which was matters from the public for anything that's not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything for us that's not on the agenda? Okay. All right, then, we're going to go on to the next item, which is ordinance 18-26, annexation part of 908 Bernadette Lane. Alderman, Stark.
Okay. Let me get it up in front of you. Loading, okay. So this is an annexation of part of a property at 908 Bernadette, and this is the, a property that acquired part of an old railroad right of way recently along Bernadette, and they approached the city about erecting a fence, and we advised them that we needed the property to be annexed in order for the city to issue any permits. They agreed to annex the property and plan to eventually construct a shed on this property as well. As we agreed with similar annexations, the city would prepare the plat of annexation, handle all the paperwork necessary to complete the annexation. The property will be zoned R, oh, R zero, R zero.
Zero.
As we agreed with similar annexations, the city would prepare the plan of annexation, handle all the paperwork necessary to complete the annexation. The property will be zoned R, oh, R zero?
Zero.
Upon annexation, with a possible rezoning to R1L at a future date, the property would be in Ward Two after annexation. The city council needs to pass the ordinance in order to annex the property. So, you know, obviously, there's two actions here that we could take, either annex it or do not annex it. The pros, of course, would be that it, again, comes into the city, they can get their building permits, it's city-electric for both parcels, and they will also, the owners will realize a small increase in their property taxes, which benefits us. The cons, there are no cons associated with it. The budget, budget impact is $275 for the plat and recording. There's no impact on staffing other than the things that they've done. And the timeline is if this is passed on to city council, it would be effective upon recording the ordinance, and staff does recommend this. So, anyone have any questions of Scott? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That was an easy one.
Uh-huh.
All right. Ordinance 18-28, vacation of part of Goldenrod Drive turnaround.
We're on vacation again, and now on the island. So, this one, Dave, you missed that. We were vacationing on an island last week. As part of a sale of nearby property, staff noted that we have a large amount of right-of-way for the Goldenrod Drive turnaround. While most hammerhead-style turnarounds are 20 feet in length on each side, this one is 40 feet in length on each side. This excess right-of-way is not necessary for turnaround purposes and can impact what the adjacent property owner can do with their property. The encroachment into the front yard affects the setback lines and can lead to problems if the owners wish to add or rebuild their homes. So, staff has prepared a plan of vacation to vacate 20 feet of the right-of-way on each side. This land would revert to the adjacent property owners, adding to their lot area. The city's not going to charge them for this additional land, similar to what we've done in most of our past roadway vacations. While it's possible we might see some additional property tax revenue for the vacation, from the vacation, the area is so small, it will likely have no effect on the levy. We've sent a letter to both property owners advising of them of the roadway vacation. We have not heard objections from either property owner. So, our alternatives are, of course, are vacate the portion of Goldenrod Drive, reserving a drainage and utility easement over the area vacated, or do not vacate Goldenrod Drive. The pros, vacating the section of right-of-way will help square off adjacent lot property boundary and will reduce the setback required for the existing homes in a proposed addition. It would clarify that the city has no ownership or maintenance responsibility for the area being vacated, and there are no cons. The budget impact is about $500 for plat preparation and recording costs. There's no additional staff impact, and this does not have a specific timeline. Staff does recommend that we approve this ordinance. So, does anyone have any questions of Scott? Scott?
Given this, this is my word, in general, does the fact that we haven't heard a negative from the residents mean that they're for it, or we just haven't heard anything?
We just haven't heard anything from them. In fact, we sent a letter regarding, if you recall, we have excess land that is being reserved.
Oh, right.
Yeah. One of the property owners also got a second letter from us regarding that, so we have not heard from them either.
Right. I mean, to me, I mean, hey, you're going to give me some more land and not charge me for it? That's cool. But still, I think that's something that, they need to understand that and kind of receive that.
Mm-hmm.
If, I mean, I mean, that's, you know what I'm saying? I, maybe I'm being provincial, but I think that's just one of those things, I think that needs to happen. You know, just because we haven't heard anything doesn't mean that's an affirmative.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, I guess it's the leading camel to water kind of thing to an extent. I mean, I think, you know, they have, you know, they have not called us and said that they objected to it. They haven't said that, you know, they're in favor of it. You know, I mean, we gave them contact information, email, and phone numbers, and, you know, we didn't hear anything from either property owner. In fact, the one that has the land sale, we haven't heard from them either on it, for that particular circumstance. So, they may not be interested in buying the land, but then again, they may not object to the vacation. So, again, you know, it, it does benefit them because it helps with the future setback. If their house burned down, they probably wouldn't be able to build it where it is today. And it really, we don't think it's going to have any effect on the property taxes because it's such a small amount.
I, I think we need to make sure that it doesn't have, you know, as opposed to, don't think, you know...
Well, I guess if it was me in that situation, I would, I would like to know.
I called on you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I would like to know. I, you know, and I think personal contact with them before we move forward with this. I think, I just, for my peace of mind before I vote on this, I want to know that that property owner knows that they're getting this piece of land.
Yeah.
Especially if this piece is free, but yet the piece that's, however many times bigger than this.
Lot.
You're, you're offering to sell to me.
Susan?
Dan?
There's precedent for this, though. Haven't we done that before?
We have. We have, we have vacated it, and even though, you know, the property owners, we didn't get, you know, an objection from them, we, we've vacated in a number of other instances.
Piece is bigger than this.
Much bigger, yes. Yeah. And just, just for an example as to tax value, you know, the example of the railroad piece that we're going to be annexing, a piece like that is probably going to be an increase of about $4 a year in taxes. And again, that's 10, 15 times larger than this piece. So, just, just saying.
She's not paying attention, so you can't get her to say you called.
I'm looking at the map, quite honestly, trying to figure out if Goldenrod goes up or not.
I don't, yeah, and my concern is even if it goes up a nickel in terms of, in terms of property tax, hey, the city gave me land and they're charging me more property tax. Look what they're doing. You know, I, I just want to make sure that, that they are in the know, that they accept that, that they receive it. So, I mean, and going forward, not just in my word, but in any word, I think it's, it's important for people to understand those implications and to receive that. I mean, I, what we're doing is great. I think it's awesome. But I do think that all parties need to understand what's happening, even if it's a $4 increase to the property tax bill. Yes, I accept that. I'll take that. Thank you very much. Looking forward to paying my $2 on June 1st.
Scott, are there any implications if we don't do anything at all?
Um, well, if the house burns down, or if they want to add on, it's going to be a problem because they wouldn't be able to rebuild it in the location they are right now because of the proximity of the property line. You know, if they build in front, you know, they, they probably would have an issue because of, again, the property line. So, as long as nothing happens to the home and they don't want to add on, no, it's probably not going to be a problem.
And then my, my second question would be, at what level do we, as a council, as you a staff, believe we've done due diligence? How many letters, how many phone calls, how many knocks on the door before we either decide yes to vacate the right-of-way and just give it to them, or no, we're not doing anything at all? I mean, where is that tipping point? I don't know the answer to that because we don't really have a, there's nothing in writing to say. We have to notify them these three different ways, and then if we don't get any response, then what do we do?
Right. I mean, under, under the law, we're not required to notify them when we vacate land at any time. We're just not required to.
Oh.
We did, as a courtesy, to do, we did do it because we wanted to just, you know, put them on notice saying, hey, you know, this is an action that we're taking, and, you know, again, not to keep them in the dark. So, we did send a letter to the both property owners saying, hey, you know, this is what we're looking to do, and, you know, if you have any questions or objections, you know, please let us know. So, you know, it depends on, you know, what you want to do. Most of the time when we're doing vacations, it's at the consent of the property owner where they're, they're actually asking us affirmatively to do it. This case, you know, this is something that the city sees as excess land. We have a couple other ones in, in the first ward that, that have hammerheads that are, you know, ones that we're going to look at also to vacate. They're just little notches that were dead ends at one time, but when they extended the road, we just never, we or the county never vacated the right-of-way. So, we've got probably about a half a dozen of these that are out there, too.
Can you back up just a few steps in what you said? Did you say that we can vacate land and, and that's it? I mean, we don't have to tell people? I mean, it's just like, this is now your land, and we don't have to tell you?
Absolutely.
So, by law, we do not have to notify those people, and we can just give them that land?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, I think that that kind of answers it.
That doesn't make it right.
Well, it's the law. It's, it's the law. That's all I can say to that, Scott.
I want to know they know.
Susan?
Yes, Dave.
Scott, so you sent a letter, snail mail or certified?
Regular mail.
Regular mail. And it sounds to me like Scott's saying you would appreciate, as the alderman, a phone call to those people beyond just a snail mail.
Yeah. Or even if it's our processes, when we're vacating land or however that's going, maybe it is certified mail. And again, maybe, you know, we're, we're increasing our costs to, you know, to the, you know, to the plat and all that by, by sending it that way. But I, I think we just, we need to cover ourselves in terms of, I mean, this is a small piece. If there's, if there's a larger piece that, that will have serious tax implications, I think you set, we set ourselves up for, for litigation.
Well, I just might be more concerned that the snail mail...
Dave?
I wasn't done. He interrupted me. So, the snail mail is something that we don't know what they've got.
Right.
So, if, if it was a certified, I think that goes further than even a phone call.
It does.
Myself, because of phone call, they maybe don't understand, or they're not going to answer their phone, and how many times you're going to call them. Where if it's a certified letter, you've done your due diligence. Typically, I would say, in my opinion, if they're objecting, they're going to reach out to you. If they're not objecting, you're not going to hear from them.
Right.
So, I mean, I would be supportive if you want to send it back and let them go to certified.
Yeah. I have no problem.
In cases like this.
Dan, you hit a comment?
I was going to say certified, or if you want to save a few bucks, if you get one in the third ward, I will knock on a door for you.
Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to either send this back or, Scott?
I'll amend it just to say, you know, if you can send it by certified mail, or maybe we should, no, hold on a second. Maybe we should pull that back.
With the response from the property owner?
With the response, with the response from the property owner, it'd be a certified mail. You know, to be able to go ahead and do that.
With a response? What if they have a response?
With a proof, proof, I guess proof of delivery, because I guess with, with certified mail, you still might not get a response.
Correct. They just, I mean, they may not want to hassle to go to the post office.
That's right.
Claim the, claim it, so.
Right. I would just, I'd like to have one more to Dave's point.
So, some type of affirmative response from the property owners to staff.
Yeah.
Or, you know, by mail or however method.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to clarify, you, you would like a response from the property owner, not just the fact that?
Right.
We sent a certified.
And I could...
Because they may never respond.
Yeah, correct. They may not return our calls or whatever, so.
Okay.
We could, we could send it certified mail. I mean, that's, you know, we can do that.
The receipt of a certified mail should be...
There you go.
Right.
That's fine by me.
So, we have a, an ordinance in front of us, and I would say that we should vote on the ordinance that's in front of us because we've heard from a couple members of the council, but not all the council, and there might be part of the council that's just fine with the way it is. So, instead of...
True.
So, let's take a vote on, let's take a roll call, please, on ordinance. Oh, so, I make a motion that we approve, or Senate Council ordinance 18-28, vacation of part of Goldenrod Drive right-of-way turnaround.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Scott, maybe you know the answer to this. I'm not sure I do. If this motion gets voted on and it gets voted down, it's dead. You're not then going to send a certified letter.
Correct.
It's dead.
And then we wouldn't vacate, then we wouldn't vacate, we wouldn't vacate the right-of-way then.
And then we could do it again, and he could send a certified letter?
I thought I, it might be misunderstanding, but I thought Salvati was suggesting adding to the ordinance with proof of delivery by certified mail.
So, you want to amend the ordinance?
Right.
Include that language?
That's what I thought I heard.
What we could, what we could do also is, you know, we already have the ordinance draft in front of you. We could have you, if you wish, to pass it, and then before we take it to city council, we could, you know, send a certified notice and make sure we get the receipts.
That's fine by me.
Scott, I would, I would ask you then, in future vacations, to Florida, Hawaii, wherever, no, do we need to amend something bigger than this so that it doesn't keep coming up?
No, I think it's just a policy direction, just to send a certified notice.
Okay. But where does that, where does it go? Where does the policy direction go so that it's recorded, so that if you're not here in five years and somebody needs to know that this needs to go out via certified mail, how do we, how does that get written somewhere?
Well, it's not required statutorily, obviously, so, I mean, it would just be kind of a directive to staff, I guess.
Internal procedures.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to check because these are those random things that come up, and the next time we think about this, we'll be like, hey, wait, didn't you say we have to do this via certified mail? I don't remember.
All right. So, the motion's what?
Yes. So, the motion is to vacate this after we send via certified letter.
Yes.
Okay. So, motion by Salvati, second by Wolf. Please do a roll call on this.
Sorry.
She's got lots of notes to read.
And you retract your motion. But there was no second.
Right. There's no second.
Okay. Salvati and Wolf was the second. And roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien, absent. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Consent agenda?
Sure.
Thank you.
It can't go to the consent agenda.
What?
We can't, can't go to consent agenda. We have to know that.
Oh, that's true. We have to.
There's been a certified letter sent out. All right, item number eight, which is Resolution 18-56SR, authorizing Pennsylvania transformer technology to furnish and install transformer at Northeast Distribution Substation for an amount not to exceed $487,000, $487,022 plus 5% contingency amount. Alderman Chanzeck?
I actually want to present them both together because they're related, 56 and 57.
Okay.
It's about three-quarters of a million dollars' worth of, uh, equipment replacement over at the Paramount Substation. Uh, we have a transformer and we have some circuit breakers, noting that, um, things came in well under budget, $160,000 under the estimate for the transformer and $32,000 under the estimate for the circuit breakers. This was previously authorized in 2017, um, the design, and now they're just, um, out for bid for, uh, the actual hardware. Um, anybody has any questions?
Real quick question for Bob, as long as he's here and waited so patiently. Um, any idea why this is so much lower than what we thought? I mean, is it just the cost of market and where the market's at right now on, on that equipment?
Well.
Or did they ramp up believing other entities were going to buy a bunch of these, and so there's a lot on the market? Because I'm kind of surprised that, being all the copper and everything else is in there, just knowing what I know of the scrap industry, how the prices have gone up, that this is that low.
This, this one bid is a little low, but if you, if you look at Rahat's memo, um, there were prices that were well above.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, these, uh, this, this company hasn't sold us one yet. Majority of the ones we have are the Waukesha SPXs and the Delta Stars. Um, these guys may want some of the business.
Okay. Elliot, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess it's not necessarily a direct question, maybe, um, but yeah, I agree. I, I was curious about the swing. Um, even if you remove Pennsylvania out of the equation and look at the remaining bids, 520 to 690, that's a very large swing. Um, so I, I'm, was maybe going to ask if you, if you know perhaps about the references, um, maybe not name, but just, you know, have we really gone and jacked around? Like, to see that wide of a swing going with the lowest makes me a little nervous to then write a check for such a large, a large amount.
Well, another, another thing to, to factor in, and I don't think this was attached, but the lead times, um, for, uh, delivery, these folks aren't very busy right now, so they're 26 to 30 weeks out. The higher-priced ones, Delta Star, was 50 to 54 weeks with a, um, a caveat that if a bunch of orders come in, it could go out farther. Um, the SPX Waukesha guys were 54 weeks. The rest of them, so the lower bids, they have capacity in their factories.
They won.
The higher bids, um, they're, they're busy. And we're very thankful that we're still talking about tariffs and didn't pass any yet.
Right.
So there may be some, a little uncertainty in these because if you're talking 54-week delivery and the federal government's talking about tariffs on steel and copper and aluminum and iron are precious metals, yeah. So I think the delivery time made us feel a little more comfortable. We have, to answer your other question, we have, um, checked references. We did our evaluation here. The Power Systems Engineers consultants also did the evaluations. They have supplied a couple of these transformers. Um, just for some history, we were familiar with the Virginia guys. That was the Mill Creek Transformer. Um, we would be very reluctant to bring, um, after our experience with that one, to bring one of those. St. Charles is buying some WEGs. They were the second evaluated low. Uh, Ethos was actually from Poland, so it was from Europe. And, um, back in 2007, we looked at a couple of bidders from Europe. We were extremely nervous. We were under a time crunch, and then all four transformers would become over on the same ship.
Hmm.
So we were not really thrilled with that. Um, and we would feel much more comfortable if these built in the country and transported here, so, um, I think that's about all the background I can give you, but we have checked the references and haven't found anything to disqualify them. We do really like the other guys, transformers that we have. They've been very good transformers. Um, but for the price difference, we couldn't say we really want to go with these guys. So we couldn't find a thing to disqualify these guys.
Thank you. Alan?
One more. Um, just, you know, with the talk of tariffs and everything and that, is there anything in, once this is a contract, is there anything written in, because I didn't go through every 100-page document, is there anything in there that would change if that passes? Would there, that price is what we're locked into?
In the contracts and in the vendor's terms and conditions, we didn't see anything that you've seen before, like 2007, where every price was basically, depends on when we deliver.
Yeah, when it got built.
There were no contingencies on any of the materials in any of these quotes.
And that's, because that was something that I thought I remembered from one of the other ones, where we were really at the, you know, the market chain.
2007, '06, that was just crazy. Yeah, none of that this time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if there are no other questions, um, I would make a motion to recommend Resolution 18-56SR approving the Pennsylvania transformer technology to furnish and install a transformer at the Northeast Distribution Substation for an amount not to exceed $511,373.
Second.
Uh, motion and second. Um, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, second, second part of that.
Can I answer, we put that on a regular agenda and talk about it because we are so much lower than, uh, being part of our electric utility, and anytime we can save a dollar on it, I think we should make sure we talk about it.
Totally. If we can find four more of these, we can plug the, um, Sams.
Two different phones.
But it does help to purchase the equipment that Rahat came, um, to us a few weeks back and said was necessary, um, for maintaining our equipment, and it wasn't a budgeted item. This now does cover that.
Fair. Uh, 57 is the second part. This is for the circuit breaker, so I would make a motion to approve, uh, this one, and this is not, uh, an amount not to exceed $61,658.
Second.
Uh, motion and second. Um, any other discussion? Sir?
It just pains me that we are doing this with Siemens after they left.
Oh, stop.
I gotta say that.
Do not drive Chevys, E.B.
Nope.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, eyes have it. Uh, we'll talk about this one as well.
Okay.
Can I make, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
It has to do with your, kind of, what you were asking about. When, we knew this was coming, so last, um, last year during the summer, we sat down with Power Systems and we blow up the budget because we have to start having our stuff in in August. So that's why things, I think the economy was a little better back then, so prices were a little higher. So, um, with this stuff, it's really hard to, we're going to see big ranges and might see some differences because, um, we're, we're trying to develop numbers probably two weeks or two years before the actual purchase happens, and that, it, that far out, it's, it's pretty, pretty fuzzy. And we are going to, uh, either myself or Gary or Rahat, when we come back, we're going to kind of keep a running tally on this substation for you folks. We have contracts yet to go for the switchgear that goes in the building. We've got the building. We've got the steel that goes around. Most everything will be inside the building. The building will look like the, the storage building that's out at the northeast. It'll be either a tilt-up, uh, concrete structure or a late block with a, um, um, metal roof, that standing seam metal roof, green. It's going to look just about like the buildings that are out there. So we'll, uh, we'll keep a running tally as we go here and where we're at. There're prob, you know, there may be some things that come in a little high, but we've been lucky so far. They've been pretty reasonable, or our forecasts were, were pretty good.
Good, thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, next one is item 10, Resolution 18-58-R, approving the location of the Flag Day Memorial on city-owned property, Alderman Attick.
Yeah, and this is for, and also the resolution is for granting, um, a perpetual easement to the Fox Valley Patriotic Association for this site. And, uh, we have visitors that would like to talk about it.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again, and, uh, it's finally starting to, uh, feel like spring in May. Uh, thank you. I know it's been a busy, uh, evening tonight, so I will be quick. We have a updated, um, schematic, which I'm going to pull up here momentarily. There we go. So I was here in, a few months ago, to, uh, discuss this community project, uh, and I am more than happy to give any type of background on the project. For those that don't remember, this is a monument project that developed as part of a celebration of the life and legacy of one of Batavia's historical prominent figures, Dr. Bernard Segrand, who is the father of Flag Day, who was successfully able to petition President Woodrow Wilson to recognize, uh, June 14th as Flag Day. The Fox Valley Patriotic Organization is an organization that evolved out of the Batavia Access Committee, uh, and the Fireworks Committee, uh, to really hone in on celebrating patriotic displays, this being, uh, this being our first, uh, and largest one. Uh, I'm joined tonight with, by, uh, a few of our board members. So we have, um, uh, in the back, Eddie Perez, a former Batavia police officer and veteran of the United States Air Force, uh, Justin Smitheran, a former, uh, or a veteran of, uh, the United States Air Force as well, and our project alderman, project architect, who's a former alderman, uh, Steve Vassillion. Uh, not with us tonight, is, are several other board members, uh, who could not be here, but, uh, they did express, uh, their desire to, and appreciation for Batavia to consider this, um, opportunity to, to locate this historic monument in downtown, actually, right out front. So the area that we talked about and spoke about last time was the, um, recreating, uh, the windmill circle, um, to kind of rehash the traffic patterns, and several of the council members, uh, suggested that, you know, we needed to go and meet with city staff. We had an opportunity to do that. We've had several great conversations with the city staff, uh, and the city staff had relayed to, uh, comments back, uh, about turning radius for fire trucks. And as it turns out, uh, it would make it more complicated for fire trucks to, to do that. So we went back to the drawing board and revised the monument to actually fit on the patch of grass in between the, um, kind of roundabout where the windmill circles are, the, and the, uh, city parking directly out front. So on the screen now is a revised rendering, uh, and I'm more than happy to go through the entire rendering, but, uh, it is, at the center of it is a flagpole, the United States flag, and it is a helix, uh, monument circle, uh, starting, radiating out of the flagpole are years starting at 1776, and it radiates all the, all the way around to 2016, and there's room for some expansion on there. Uh, there are five pillar points. The first and main, as you walk in, will be a testament to Dr. Bernard Segrand, but there will be several other flag monuments, and it's a timeline that talks about, uh, our country, the adversity that every generation has faced, and how they've, uh, addressed and, and, and achieved, uh, in the face of that adversity. So this site completely fits on the, uh, grassy knoll that's out there. Uh, we've taken some, okay, don't mention that, on the grassy pad that's out there. Uh, and, uh, we've, um, we've got a, um, a water feature, which I will, let's see if I can zoom in here. There we go. A water feature. We have a donor who is interested in providing, uh, funding specifically, uh, for the family, a longtime family, uh, and they're interested in having some sort of water feature. So, um, we've got some interesting ideas on that. After a meeting with Park District, uh, and talking about fountains and fountain maintenance, uh, they gave us some constructive feedback, uh, and we were able to, uh, work with, um, and get some ideas from their landscape design architect, um, I think they're called Upland Design out of Naperville, and they came back with some great feedback. So the concept that we're talking about for this, um, water feature, uh, which would be one entry point into the monument circle here, uh, would be pretty interesting, and, I'm going to see if I can get to a YouTube link here. We're talking about the jumping, uh, fountain, like, and jumping fountains that you'd be able to walk under, and, uh, there is technology that allows you to light them in several, uh, sorry about that, uh, in several different colors. So we could do a red, white, and blue theme. We could have, uh, themes change at every, you know, every 15 minutes or 20 minutes. But this is just a, an idea, and if you go jumping jet fountains with LED lights, there's about a thousand YouTube, uh, hits where you can see on this. But this was a suggestion that, that came through the feedback of, uh, the, uh, our meetings with the Park District. So, um, that's a design and element change, but other than that, it's very similar to what was presented, um, before. Um, one of the other concepts came out was not to have just a little grassy pad available, uh, next door, so we're actually programming that with, um, a, a feature area that would be, um, sundial teaching patio is what it's called. So the interesting, uh, part about this monument, in addition to the fact that it's going to be a great historic testament to, uh, the United States flag and how the flag has consistently brought and united the country for every generation, um, we're also going to have a pretty cool science, uh, component to this as well. Um, the flagpole is actually going to be a sundial, and using, um, using the same technology that's been around since the Mayans and other cultures, we're going to use the top of the flagpole in order to cast shadows over particular periods of time in U.S. history. So on the 10-foot walkway around the monument circle, in certain areas, we're going to be able to, for example, on exactly 7:53 a.m. on September 11th, we will be able to have the sun's, uh, or the, uh, shadow from the flagpole, uh, exactly over a stone that commemorates the, uh, attacks on 9/11. We're going to be able to do that with a number of, uh, U.S. historic moments. Um, maybe the first landing on the moon. I mean, there'll be a lot of cool moments, and interchanged with U.S. history is going to be all the rich Batavia history and Fox Valley history that we have in this area, uh, because we are communities that have had a significant impact on the way this country has developed, and we're going to celebrate that right here in town. So the sundial teaching area is going to talk about, the idea is we'll use it as programming space and have a sundial there and have some displays on how we can actually utilize, or how we use the technology or the, the advanced knowledge that Mayans and all of these other civilizations have used and how we, how we created that. So there's an opportunity to have it as a, kind of a continued programming area and an area that, um, we'll talk more about the science of the, uh, exhibit as well. So, once again, um, the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization is a 501(c)(3). The concept behind this is it will cost the city nearly nothing but staff time and the use of some land, um, and that our organization is, is going to raise the funds to create, erect, and maintain this monument in perpetuity. Um, and we're, we're partnered with the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley. It's roughly been in business 70 years. It's a private foundation based out of Aurora with office in Geneva as well. Um, they, I don't know how many funds they have, but they have a lot of endowment funds. Their balance is just shy of about $100 million, so it's an organization that'll be around for a long time, and they'll be our endowment partner. Uh, but we're hopeful that you guys will be able to support, um, the ordinance to locate this monument here and, and really create, uh, quite a, quite a historic and, and quite a patriotic gem right here in our community.
All right, are there any questions?
Not a question, just, I love everything I've seen on this so far, from the reading, from, from the pictures, from the artwork. I just think it's amazingly cool. I commend all of you guys for putting this project together. I, I'm very excited about this, so. Thank you.
Dave?
Austin, I know you and your team have worked over two years now.
Two years, yep.
To find a spot for this.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure not having a location has hindered or could hinder the fundraising effort, right? It's kind of like, how am I going to donate to something that I don't know where it's going to be and where, if it could be?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm glad to see, hopefully, this come to a conclusion. I think it's a good spot for it. I know back two years ago, when I was a part of the conversation with you, I think we, we looked at that area, but there were some obstacles that obviously you've overcome. So I, I think it's a good spot, and I support it.
Thank you.
Scott?
Uh, as well, I'm really excited about it, and, you know, really brings some focus to downtown, you know, complements our riverwalk, you know, that we've got the Historic Society right there, um, all those things. It's just wonderful focus, and to have that here will be complimentary and, uh, and bring success to all those things. I'm, I'm really excited about it.
Thank you.
Susan?
Um, again, I am that person, there are two typos in the resolution. Um, there's a period after active Congress that needs to go away, um, and the semicolon needs to be closer, and there needs to be a comma after the "and" in the paragraph that starts with the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization.
All right, I, I think it's a really cool, um, entrance to the Government Center, too, which we really don't have, so it kind of sets it off, and, um, it'd be very exciting to have it here.
Yeah, and I think it.
Yes?
I think this is a, much more than just a little roadside sign that says, hey, Flag Day happened here in Batavia. Um, this is something that, not just because of all the things we value as historical in Batavia, but nationally, this will become something that, for generations into the future, is going to be something people are going to want to see.
Oh, Marty?
Marty?
Yeah, I also clearly support this and welcome our new proofreading board member. But I think it also, and not to be overlooked, is we have a resident who purchased Bernard Segrand's home and is restoring that to its prime glory, and that is looking absolutely amazing. So I think that is another great compliment to this project that overall, we're going to have continued destinations where we're going to have people visit our town.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really cool. You, you think about a monument like this that wouldn't think about it being so close to home. I mean, I'm headed to Washington in a few weeks, and really cool stuff there, but this is one of those things. It is a destination, and I think it's going to be pretty spectacular to have something like that right here.
Dave, did you have something?
Just lastly, I just wanted to mention that I did talk to the mayor this afternoon, as I know Laura did also, and obviously, we all know he's supportive of this effort, but he's also in support of this location, too.
Okay. Thank you. Um, would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution 18-58-R, the grantee of perpetual easement to the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization for the site of a Flag Day monument?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it.
Okay, so it goes in the next city council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Build it, and they will come.
Yeah, build it, and they will come. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 11 now, which is approval of the purchase of three windmills from a Batavia resident, Francine Popick, for $11,375. Alderman Attick?
Right. Do we have pictures of Dave by chance? No?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. So Laura has been working with France, Francine Popick, and the wife of Bob Popick, and he was a great curator of windmills and collector of windmills and expert in history about windmills. And we have been, um, given the opportunity to purchase three of those windmills. The Appleton Goodhue for $5,000, the Challenge 27 for $4,000, or $3,000, and the Challenge Big Spear for $3,375. Um, and I, I think it's cool that Chris is coming up with a walking, a windmill walking tour, and this will be a nice addition to that, um, tour. Are there any questions or comments? Alan?
Um, Laura?
I think someone is.
Since you've had all the discussion with Francine.
Yes.
Does she have any spare parts? Because I know Bob, that's what he did forever.
Yes.
And does she also have any manuals or anything that he's documented, all the other work that he's done on all the other windmills in town?
Very little documentation exists.
This is our chance. I think we try to get everything we can.
Oh, absolutely, and she is providing all of the, any of the spare parts that she has that are associated with these, uh, windmills. Um, I also wanted to mention that we have been approached by a local business owner who may be interested in obtaining, um, one of the, the Challenge, uh, windmills as well, and that would be nice to see those. We like to see the windmills displayed, kind of throughout the town, as long as it's going to someone who will, you know, maintain it into the future. But, so, that might also be a possibility that defrays our cost of obtaining, um, these windmills.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Marty?
Could we also, with all of that, get any documentation supporting the appraisals on that, just to make sure that we're verifying the value of those?
Sure.
That's a great point, because I, I started to think about that after we talked about this, and, okay, so we've got 12 or whatever the number is of what Batavia owns on these. Do we have these things insured? Do we, I mean, if we have something come through, knock them down, smash one? I mean, it's not something you can just go out and buy pieces and put it back together. It takes, one, some real skill, and, two, some real detective work to find any pieces of, any. of anything or rebuild or replace anything on it.
I can verify that, but I believe that all of the city's assets are covered by our general policy. Although there would be a deductible that would apply.
I see parts on eBay. I was just looking them up to see pictures, and there's parts on eBay.
Former old man home, probably a garage full of parts.
There were a lot of Batavia windmills in this country.
Yeah. I think the one windmill is the one, the very last one that was made here that we don't have in our inventory.
Yes, so that would be the Appleton Goodhue.
Right.
And that we don't have an example of in our collection, and it is one of only three intact Appleton Goodhues left, period. So it's really a great thing for us to be able to obtain for our collection.
I think that's a very worthwhile investment, and I'm very excited about the one or two, possibly, that this local business owners look into purchase, which would then reimburse us for the cost of the one or two, and be located in the city where I think makes a lot of sense. Look forward to that coming to us, too.
Scott?
I just say, I'm thankful for Mr. Popick's care, and this is a great legacy for him in terms of everything he's done for this community, and, you know, I think it's a special thing for us to be able to do.
Absolutely.
All right, would someone like to make the motion for the approval to purchase three windmills from Francine Popick?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, what do you want to do with that, on consent or talk about it?
I think we can talk about it.
Talk about it, okay, good. All right, item 12, approval of the mayoral reappointments of the city of Batavia heads as of May 1st, 2018, for a one-year term. Almanetek?
Well, you said what's going on here, and it's time for that. Annual appointment of the city officers and department heads effective May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019. And this is for City Administrator Laura Newman, Finance Director and Budget Officer Peggy Colby, Fire Chief Randy Deike, Police Chief Daniel, Public Works Director Gary Holm, City Engineer Rahat Bari, Human Resources Director Wendy Bennerak, Information Systems Director Howard Chason, Community Development Director Scott Buie, Street Department Superintendent Scott Haynes, Water Department Superintendent Jeremy Barki, Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent Byron Richardson, Asda Coordinator Chief Randy Deike, Asda Manager Mark Davis, and City Attorney Kevin Drundle. Is there a motion to approve the annual department head appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, move on then to the next item, which is project status.
Will that one be on the consent agenda?
I think that it should be on the regular agenda, because then it would also be on the agenda where the mayor makes the appointments.
Jim Volk isn't here, though, so let's go consent.
What's that?
Jim Volk isn't here, so consent is fine.
Regular.
No, but the mayor's got to make the appointments anyway, so you have it.
It has to be on the regular agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, Laura, you're up.
Yes, so I wanted to share that we, and thank the community, because we received 1,055 responses to the community survey, which closed this Monday. So right now, we are working to put together a report of those results, but also a comparison back to the last time that we did the same community survey back in 2010, which will be published to all of you and the community at large as well. And we will be using that information to inform the process of updating the strategic plan, which leads me to the next item, that if everyone is available, we wanted to schedule the next strategic planning meeting for Monday, May 14th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. At this point, I know there's a couple of people, Elliot, did you let me know that you would not be available?
I'm a tentative.
You're tentative.
I may be coming late.
Okay, okay, and to that, I thought it might be best to host that meeting not in our regular forum, since we want to have a more, have breakout sessions and a face-to-face kind of discussion about it. I was requesting from George Sheets if we might be able to utilize a room at the library. The only drawback there is that the library closes at 9:00 p.m. So that's...
It's not a drawback. It keeps us focused and gets us out.
Saying, and I don't know if we would be able to maybe start just a little bit earlier. I know that it's hard for the commuters, but if we could start at 6:00 or 6:30, that would be better, too. I don't know if anybody has...
It's a public meeting?
Yes, it would be a public meeting.
So there'd be room there?
Yes.
Okay.
Any thoughts on starting earlier? I can send out the invitation and see if people are able to, but...
I might be able to make 6:30, but...
6:30?
Depends on BNSF. So I'll be there at 9:00.
Okay, I will send out the invitation for 6:30 p.m. and see if we're able to make it then, otherwise, we can do the session from 7:00 to 8:45, and, like you said, laser focus. Dan?
We did almost talk for an hour about cigarette smoking and strategic planning seems to be a big thing. I'm scared about the 9:00 o'clock.
So perhaps I should look for another venue that would be available from 7:00 to 10:00?
Or if they could stay open till 9:30 at least. I'm just scared we'd be talking about something important and be like, oh, time to go.
Right, right.
Point?
It's a good point. Let me keep my ears open for potential other venues as well.
It's strategic planning, we're not going to be talking about the dam, we're going to be talking about everything.
Couldn't be more important.
Quick thought, we have two meeting rooms in fire stations that have all the stuff we might need to be able to use, decent chairs, good tables, and there's no time restrictions on them.
That makes great sense.
I'll look into that. Sounds easy.
Okay, just some project items, items on the May 2nd Plan Commission, the Funway Expansion zoning approvals, and also MetroNet's hut zoning approval on Orion Road. We're continuing with the final inspections for the Windmill Manor Senior Project that's on Hawks Drive, and reviewing the Winding Creek, that's the name of the new subdivision that will be at the Land Meyer Farm Project behind the former Sam's Club, with staff and the developer at the development review meeting this week. We reviewed site plans for the East Side Community Center parking lot and playground with the Batavia Park District, and we are continuing to work on our community development block grants, applications for the 2018 CBG grant cycle. Continuing work on the land swap with the Park District around City Hall and Pegbonne Center, and also meetings and continued work on One Washington Place, getting the final project revisions in anticipation of bringing that to the committee of the whole on May Economic Development is completing an email list for distribution of the city's 2018 business survey, so we just did a community survey for residents, and we will very soon be launching a survey of our business communities. The survey has been finalized and is completed, and will go online through Survey Monkey. The emails will go out May 15th, and wherever possible, if we need to, we'll use U.S. Postal Service as well. Public Works is extremely busy. The electric staff met with our engineering consultant to discuss the structural integrity of the power poles on the east and west side of Wilson Street. You recall, those are concrete poles, and one of them was hit at the corner of Verdant and Wilson Street, revealing some structural integrity issues that unfortunately, we think may exist throughout the entire system along Wilson Street with those poles. Also, discussions related to utility capital planning, operational budgets, and our utility rates, that issue will be coming to the committee of the whole sometime later in May. And numerous different departments met to discuss communication efforts during emergency situations such as power outages and storm damage, flooding, those type of events, and we think we've come up with a way where that information can get put up on the website and simultaneously be broadcast also on Facebook and also on Twitter. The contractor has mobilized and is making initial preparation work for the Area 3 drainage project, and we're also having a pre-construction meeting for the work that will be going on in, for the Ward 1 drainage project. Everyone can notice around town that our sidewalk replacement project is well underway, and all work should be completed within the next two weeks. Our solid waste contract has been advertised for proposals, and that the results of which should be, the opening of those bids is on Monday. And staff prepared over 400 tree saplings for distribution to local grade schools as part of our annual Arbor Day efforts. Also, we went live with, on the city's website, with a development project map, which I think was the suggestion of Alderman Stark. That can be found on the community development page. On the left-hand side, you'll see a link that will take you to development projects. We have four development projects there now, but certainly will just continue to propagate and add to the projects as they come about. I also wanted to share with you, since we have the financial reports for the first three months of the year, just to provide you with a kind of an update of the financial snapshot, because I think especially this year, when we've lost our Sam's Club, it's important to know where we're at. And the first quarter's financial report shows some good news, that our revenues are actually up this time, over this time last year. So that's good, that gives us a little bit of buffer. Now, from the sales tax side, that would reflect sales tax revenue that was received by our retailers in December. So of course, Sam's Club was still open at that time. Our April receipts will reflect January, Sam's Club is still open at that time. It's really not until our May sales tax receipts when we will see the impact of that Sam's Club closure, so we'll be keeping a very close eye on that. But the other thing that we're keeping a very close eye on are our expenses. Even where items are budgeted, we're saying, do we have to buy it? Do we have to buy it now? And is this really the lowest price that we can buy this for, for the quality that we need? And I think that that's resulted in, I think, all departments are below a 25% spend on their budget, so it demonstrates to me that all of the senior staff are really keeping a hawk eye on that for us. But we'll continue to bring you updates as more information is known. But does anybody have any questions about that?
I guess not necessarily about that, but it kind of came up earlier with that projection was so far over the bids, and I only have the year of history that I've been doing this, but I've seen that a lot. We saw it a lot last year, maybe it had, road construction was different last year, but we've seen, and maybe I just think I've seen it a lot, and it seems like we're not very accurate with our budgeting, and I would, I'd be getting called out of work if I was 30, 50% off of my estimates, even though, hey, it's savings, but that's preventing us from maybe doing other things that we've held back on because, oh, nope, sorry, we don't have enough budget to do this. So do we have a really good idea of how accurate we are from a budgeting standpoint?
Well, I think Bob made a good point when he pointed out that when we're doing our capital projects, because we do a five-year capital plan, oftentimes, the engineering study where the project is being planned might be a couple of years in advance of when we're actually going out to bid on those contracts. So that lag time makes a big difference. It isn't by design, trying to, you know, be incredibly conservative, because as you say, we don't want to withhold resources from other valuable projects that we could be investing those budget dollars in. Any other questions?
Those weren't net revenues that you were talking about.
Just Mike, Lucy.
I mean, those were, what, you said that revenues are up and spending's down.
A general fund is what I would be referring to.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, anything, any other questions about budget? Wanted to make mention that May is National Bike Month. I think our bike commission would want me to mention this, so if it's possible, give yourself an opportunity to bike to work if you can, and utilize some of the fabulous trails that we have available to us here. We're very, very lucky here in Batavia that we do have the places to bike that we do. So that's all that I have.
That's it? Okay, we'll go on to others. Marty?
Yeah, yes, she left. She was waiting around all night. Penelope Grand was here. I wanted to recognize her for being here, but I want to see if another alderman would join me at the, having the mayor break out his magical iDot typewriter and look at, have iDot look at the speed from Merlot South to Millview, it goes 45, 40 through there, and I'm sure, as Penelope was going to bring up, there's been accidents in front of her house. She sees the speed consistently 50, 60 miles an hour. That stretch is important because we have ballfields, parks, we have Carlisle, which is the exit for all the AGS students. There's a lot of walking to school through that area, there's a lot of points coming into town. So if we're going to look at it from the north end, I would like to look at it from the south end, where the speeds were higher to begin with. And then, second, she had also asked, do we know in the West Cemetery, there's a path that is on the east side, and it goes west to south to the quarry? It supposedly has been closed for a decade, is what Penelope had found out. Do we know who has that? Is that city? Is it, is it Park? Because it's kind of in disrepair, but a lot of people utilize it, and it's an easier access way instead of having everybody walk.
I seem to recall that we had received an email about that, and that Scott Haynes had responded that it was Park District.
Okay.
Property there.
Yeah, I was going to say, I believe it's Park District, and I think at some point it became a safety issue, either from their insurance review or something, and that's why they didn't do it, because basically, they'd have to rebuild the entire thing and make it compliant.
Right.
Which is virtually impossible.
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up for her on that, since I don't know where our property is and where the Park District is.
Marty, the speed limit, I certainly don't have a problem with what you're suggesting there, but I would maybe think that we should ask our police department to weigh in on that a little bit, because if you're going to lower the speed limit in that area, would it not be Hoover's to lower it just a little bit further south so that the intersection of Millview and Batavia Avenue, the speed is reduced at that point, before you get to it?
Right, and I would agree with that, but I think that's township, south of Millview.
It's state.
Yeah.
It's all state route.
But for enforcement action, I would like to, I would like to see a little more enforcement out on there anyways, just because the speeds are, they are pretty bad.
Sean, did you have any comment on that?
Yes, you're talking about enforcing up until Millview, correct? Because our jurisdiction, I don't know, you wouldn't be able to enforce speeds south of that location.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we've done some speed through our speed studies the past couple of years. See if I can pull that data on, we can do another speed study as well in that area, and then obviously, we can continue to keep up enforcement in that area as well.
Yeah, I would just like to see it, because I do know that from traveling that way, coming, commuting now from Aurora, I'm seeing a lot of speed that is, you know...
It's terrible, as I mentioned to you before, I, that's the way I go home every night, and I quit going home that way. I'll go out to Orchard Road and come back the other way.
It's so much narrower, it's a pain through there, but I recognize the limitations. But I would like to see, have the police department have a little bit more, because I do think the 40 through there is just a little bit excessive, since that is going through our downtown. And if we're trying to make, I would like to see, for consistency's sake, from Millview all the way up to Fabian, where we're getting everybody used to one sort of, one sort of speed. Because I think we know that if the speed limit's 40, they're doing 50. And I know it's not going to drop it down, but if we do 30 in the residential, or even 35, I would be okay with your, you're at least reducing it.
Susan?
I would support Marty on that, and I would ask that we have staff do some additional work on trying to get the speed limit lowered there. It's always surprised me that we've put so much emphasis on the McKee Crossing and not any emphasis, really, to speak of, down by the quarry, which is where I see more and more and more children trying to cross Route 31. And so, and I regularly, we have friends that live on Carlisle, and when you're turning out of Carlisle, the speed limit coming around the curve is fast. And it's, you're taking your life in your own hands if you're trying to turn out under 31. So I would wholeheartedly recommend that we try to make additional changes in speed limit.
Dan?
While I absolutely support this, I guess, Marty, I would just want to set expectations properly for the lady that was here. The only reason that that McKee thing got approved is, after visiting Springfield, literally an intern opened that mail and dispatched a crew. They have had so much turnover at iDOT, that's the, literally the only reason. I swear, it is an intern that opened the mail and was like, oh, let's quick do this. And they dispatched a team the next day.
That's from that intern.
What's that?
From the intern.
Well, if that person still works there, because of the turnover. I was terrified after I left DOT, I mean.
They've had 800 people that they've replaced, and they're 200 short.
In one year.
In one year.
I feel like they.
That's what happened with iDOT.
Yeah, like they opened our letter and like, oh, here's something we can easily do, we can turn some screws. That's what happened.
Lucy, I'm surprised, although I'm sure you support this idea, I'm surprised you haven't jumped all over this, because it's very contrary to the conversation we had about changing in governing when people can buy cigarettes. We're governing when, how fast people can go, but we can't govern when they can buy cigarettes.
I think the quarry crossing is really problematic and has been. I agree.
Dave, actually, it's very consistent, because all we're doing is asking.
I didn't mean to get into a little lot. Sorry, Marty.
Yes, can the staff do it again? Can't put that toothpaste.
Does anybody else have any?
I have one, Dave.
Alan?
Just a reminder for everybody that there is a Loyalty Day picnic in lieu of having a parade down at the VFW post on 25. And there also is a car cruise for anybody that'd like to bring a car down. Starts at 11:00 a.m.
Susan?
And this weekend, of course, is the citywide garage sale. So please support the garage sales throughout town. That money all goes to help fund the fireworks. It's the fireworks' biggest fundraiser of the year. And so maps will be available at 7-Eleven, McDonald's, various places around town, City Hall.
And on the city's website.
And on the city's website, that's right. I saw that it's been posted on the city website. So we have an interactive map that shows where people are actually selling at their sites, too. So it's very, very cool. Everybody will be out and about, and hopefully we'll have good weather.
Any others?
One more, I forgot, when we were talking about making motions and getting things written up. Last year, we did a suicide prevention for the month of September, I believe it is. I'd like to have somebody join me in support of that and get that drawn up. When we were down at the drive-down, talking to Joel Frieders from Yorkville. This is something that we want to move beyond just the simple, okay, I know somebody, or whatever. Happened to be not just a single city movement, but try to get it linked up, make it Fox River Valley, make it Northeastern Illinois, and really start to make sure that people aren't afraid to talk about suicide, aren't afraid to talk about mental illness, and to get this out in front of the public. Because I think if we took care of a lot of those problems, we wouldn't have to legislate things to stop people from doing things they shouldn't do.
I'll second you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Motion adjourned.
Someone?
Second. More, if you want the resolution.
Who was the motion?
Just call Joel.
Susan? Second, was somebody all in favor?
Aye.
Just copy what we have.
Yep.